If I could have everyone's attention, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's good to see everyone this afternoon and just glad to be here in our beautiful City Hall on this Monday, October the 3rd. Since we've called the meeting to order, Councilman Terrell is going to offer our prayer and then we will stand and place the flag and offer the Pledge of Allegiance. Johnny?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, God. Father, we thank you for all you've done for us. We thank you for this council. May we all continue to enjoy your blessings, Father God. Father, look in on us as we have this meeting today. Let us learn to agree and to disagree, whatever. But Father, you come in and be with us as we have this meeting, dear God. I should your blessings to every one of the council members and everyone that's in authority, Father. We thank you in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Johnny? That was a nice... All right, everyone should have a copy of the agenda. For those of you in the audience, if you'd like a copy, they're back here on the lectern if you'd like to get a copy there so you can follow along with us. And at this point in time, I will take a motion to either approve the agenda or make any changes.
I so move it.
Okay, we have motions, or second?
Second.
We're into motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. And just to let everyone know, Councilman Ayers, Vice Mayor Ayers, is at the chamber event this afternoon, so he will be coming in, but will be coming in a little bit late. We also have at this point in time our citizen input. Is there any, nobody signed up? Was there anyone that wanted to address the council that maybe didn't realize you needed to sign up? Is everything good? Okay, perfect. All right, now we are on to our next item, which is something special for a very dear friend of mine, and I am very proud to be able to present this to him. And let's see, we'll just grab all of this. I'm going to ask Mr. Lee Turner if you will come forward. (Applause). How you on suffering, you just want some help? This is a big day for you. As most of you know, Lee Turner was recently recognized with a national award from the American Cancer Society. And we're so proud of you. You've worked so hard for so many years on this, and don't you cry when you make it happen. This is a proclamation from the council and myself and on behalf of the entire city to honor you. And I'm so proud of you, I'm gonna do this for you. Says, "Whereas, as a survivor of cancer as a child and seeing his grandmother as well as his mother battle this deadly disease, Lee Turner has developed a deep passion for cancer volunteer work and began volunteering with the American Cancer Society in 1998. Whereas using his passion for finding a cure and confidence that a cure will one day be found, Turner strives to help advocate for meaningful legislation that helps not only eliminate the burden of cancer, but also end the suffering and death caused by this disease. And whereas leading the ambassador constituent team in Georgia's 8th Congressional District for the American Cancer Society Action Network, Turner recruits and manages other local volunteers to lead district advocacy and fundraising efforts, in addition to serving as the primary volunteer contract with District 8 lawmakers. And whereas not only is he focused on the overall goal of finding a cure and keeping the funding going, but Turner zealously works to bring awareness to the many programs established to those who suffering from cancer, Look Good, Feel Better, and Hope Lodge are among these programs. And whereas the act lead of the year is selected by the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, which looks for one volunteer, one volunteer, who has demonstrated remarkable leadership advocating for cancer-related public policy at the state, local, and federal levels, with Turner being made this year's honored recipient of this prominent award that was presented to him on September 11th as part of the annual Leadership Summit and Lobby Day. Now therefore, I Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of the Tifton City Council, do hereby honor Lee Turner for his dedication and commitment to making cancer a national priority, and I encourage my fellow citizens to join me in celebrating Mr. Turner's receipt of this national award as cancer is something we all need to help find a cure here in this state, for November 10th."
This is an honor. You know, all it is, you know, it's...
(Laughter).
You know, it's a passion of mine, you know, that, you know, one day it will find a cure that, you know, that we don't have to, you know, wake up and see our loved ones, you know, suffering from this disease. So, you know, I just encourage anybody that has a chance to do anything with the American Cancer Society, any cancer, you know, organization to, you know, volunteer, do a little bit, you know, so we can find that cure.
Thank you, Lee. And you worked so hard and I appreciate it. Thank you. (Applause). Tell you what, I've known Lee for many, many years. He is a dear friend, and when he puts his heart and mind to something, he might as well just get out of the way. It's gonna happen, so we're very proud of you. And also at this point in time, I would like to ask Mr. Jeff Robbins, please come forward. We have several boards and commissions and authorities and all sorts of things that we... There's your, that you were supposed to get earlier. Nothing like candle to bring the light. That we rely on our citizens to help us out with. And Jeff has agreed to follow our Historic Preservation Commission, and we're very excited about that because you have great experience, you live in historic history, I know it's actually here, so we appreciate your service. And at this point in time, I am going to read to you the oath of office. So, all you have to do is to say aye to affirm when I approve. All right, this is that I, Jeff Robbins, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Tifton Historic Preservation Committee of this city, and that I will support and defend the Charter of the City of Tifton as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless confidentially entered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto, unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the State of Georgia, and I shall also attend to schedule any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. Do you hereby affirm?
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you. (Applause). That's all you need. All right, at this point in time, I'm going to turn everything over to Mr. Jason Jones, who's going to go over our Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Jason, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and just discuss in brief our Hazard Mitigation Plan update. As part of emergency management, one of the things that we have to do is maintain a multi-jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. These plans are required by both GMA and FEMA, and it's where we take the opportunity to, to look at the different hazards as it may pertain to flooding or other types of storm events, and come up with some type of workable plan to mitigate those things through the future, or in the future. These plans have to be renewed once every five years. GMA, the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, is, every five years, is kind enough to give us grant money to, to have this thing updated. So, we, we take very good advantage of that and, like we did five years ago, hired, hired Mr. Mike Tally from H&amp;H Resources, which is an engineering firm out of, out of Darty County, to take a look at this plan and make sure that everything's in there that needs to be. Mr. Tally will step up here in just a second, but one of the important things to remember about it is, there's no money tied to this, doesn't cost anything, but should we have the unfortunate circumstance to find ourselves involved in a, in a major disaster, in declared disaster, if we don't have this, then we don't get federal funding. So, need to have it, there's good stuff in there, it's a good plan, it's a way ahead for us, and again, that costs us anything, but it does clear the way to, to receive some federal dollars, if heaven forbid, we should ever need them. So with that, I'll let, let Mr. Tally step up, he can give you just a couple more details, and then we'll open it up for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you for having me tonight. Basically, I got the train.
(Laughter).
I'll let it pass us.
Jessica.
There we go. I used to work for Norfolk Southern, so I know how they are.
My screen is blank.
All right. There we go. As Mr. Jones said, this plan is renewed every five years, and I did the last plan update five years ago for Tiff County, and it is multi-jurisdictional, each of the incorporated jurisdictions within Tiff County have to adopt the plan. What we've done over the past year and a half is have quite a few meetings with city and county staff and other shareholders, such as the, the local college or other businesses that wanted to give input into the various hazards that Tiff County and the municipalities face. As you can imagine, the biggest threat we have is weather-related events, in particular flooding. And I know with the last hurricane came through, tropical storm came through, you, Tiff County was hit pretty hard. Darty County, we barely got any rain or wind, but just 20 miles, 30 miles further to the east is, it shows the difference of just the track that a, a storm can take. What the plan has is mitigation strategies to try to limit the exposure of the citizens of, of the various communities to the various hazards. We cannot stop tornadoes, we cannot stop floods, but what can we do to limit the exposure? And so the mitigation steps in there range from public education to actual structural type measures such as storm range improvements or buyout programs for flood-prone areas, various emergency management responses and plans that they could draft to, to make the response to a disaster quicker and better for the community. As Mr. Jones explained, there is no cost to the cities or the counties, there's no obligation to implement any of these mitigation steps. However, what I'd like to point out in all my meetings is that when sales tax comes around and it's time to begin to figure out which project should we allocate our funds to, these have some ready-made projects, they're gonna be on the shelf and you can take a look at them, they have preliminary cost figures associated with them, and for particular, for Tifton, you have your Master Drainage Plan, and that is in there, so continued phased improve, implementation of that Master Drainage Plan. I know it's been in the works for probably almost 10 years now, but that stuff can be pretty expensive, so it's one, you may not want to allocate any funds at this time, but when sales tax negotiations comes up and you're trying to figure out where to allocate your funds, it's a great resource to, to check. In addition, if you do not have this plan and if it's not adopted and approved, you, as Mr. Jones explained, you will not be eligible for federal fund, funding in, in the event of a disaster. Tiff County has already adopted this plan, and we will be heading to the City of Ti-Ti for this and Amiga tomorrow, and hope to be able to finish this up as quickly as possible to, FEMA's already approved it pending the adoption by the various municipalities. So, that's kind of a brief overview. The document's rather large, the, the main report's not that big, but all the appendices that we're required to have really beef it up, so it's not like I sat there and wrote all those pages, thank goodness, or that you had to read them all. But if you have any questions, we happy to answer them. If not, we ask that you approve this plan.
Okay. Got any questions? You good frame, Johnny? You have any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that, and appreciate all's hard work on that, so...
Mayor?
Yes?
I know that we're further down on the consent agenda, we have another place to be if it was...
That's fine, I don't think there's any, any issues, so I think we'll be, I think we'll be fine, so, yeah, no problem. Thank you for being here and for sharing that information. All right, our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August 29th meeting and the September 15th workshop and special call meeting, and those are in our packets, so I will take a motion on those minutes.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We are now at the point of the agenda for the consent agenda, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six items, including the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We can take these independently or we can take these collectively, whatever is at the pleasure of the council. These include the resi, the resolution providing for the designation of Commerce Way in honor of Chief Jim Smith, and some various things on the DOT roadways and L-MIG projects and natural gas participation, and you can read there. Any, any questions on any items? Do you want to separate anything out or approve collectively?
Take them all.
Take them all, okay. I will accept a motion.
I so move.
We have a motion to accept all the items on the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? Being none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So that passes. So, we have a new street name in Tifton. Congratulations. That's awesome. That was, that was good, that, very good work. I tell you what, Chief Jim Smith was such an honorable man, and that's a, that's a good thing, so we're proud of that. That will be good. Our next item on the agenda pertains to our resolutions. Our first item is a resolution adopting administrative and licensing fees for alcoholic beverages. Do we have any discussion on that, Jessica? We need to go over anything, or?
None, if y'all don't have anything from the last meeting. The only change there was adding that catering license fee about.
Right. Y'all remember we talked about that at the workshop?
Yeah, that's the only change to the list. It's just the fees.
Get to that point on the paperwork here. Do this. All right, and in your packet we have that resolution with fees and everything. Is there a motion to accept that?
So move.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, our next item is for the Enterprise Zone application from Baxley Properties, and a copy of that is in your folder or in your packet. Is there a motion to accept that resolution for those grant incentives?
The motion at the last council meeting, additional information was asked of me.
Okay.
And I provided that, if y'all had a chance to look over it, there's a spreadsheet showing the past 10 years, there was nothing in 2006, but from 2007 to date, it shows how, the incentives that we granted on each application.
Is that before the...
It's the first.
Okay, I see it now, okay. On page 73.
And on each application, instead of putting 100%, I put an estimated amount. Sometimes when I look back at the records, if there was anything additional, if the applicant requested additional funding, that would come back to the council for approval at that time.
Okay.
So you would amend the, the resolution to reflect any additional fees that they felt they were entitled to.
Okay.
I would just, and I appreciate that additional information. When we talk, just the utilities, it says maximum bails 100% and the staff recommends $3,000. Is that 100%?
We don't know yet, because we don't know what they're doing on that one. I'll, let's see. I put there how I come up with it on the second sheet past that, if y'all look at this one.
So that...
That's...
That's a pretty good estimate, that $3,000.
Yes, 'cause that's a, if they, they're doing five apartments, so if they meter each apartment at a 3/4 inch meter, that would be the total. We don't know how they're gonna do it, but that would be the max. They could do one meter, you know, it'd be a larger meter probably, but that's if they did each individual apartment on their own meter. And so anything, if they went over the 3,000 and needed anything additional, like if they wanted the gas, we don't know if they want gas yet, we would come back to you and...
I have a question. The property, J&amp;S Properties 401 Love Avenue, they are no longer in business. How, is there, do they continue to receive those tax abatements if they're no longer in business?
I can check on that. I would say yes, I don't know why.
Generally, if, if you don't continue to comply with the requirements of the Enterprise Zone, then you lose those benefits.
We need, we need to check on that one.
And one of the things that we've discussed is that, you know, if you're creating five or more jobs, they have to continue to have those five jobs, continue to qualify. So you still have to leave the qualifications, continue getting the benefits.
Hello, Johnny? I mean Wes.
My name is Johnny. Sorry if I'm late.
I'm sorry.
At the Chamber Golf Tournament, I do apologize.
I told everybody where you were.
Let it be known, we can all wear shorts.
No, you can't, unless you play golf at the Chamber Golf Tournament. What a great organization. Go ahead.
If you're late, you can wear shorts.
But anyway, does that answer your questions as far as what you needed for that additional information on the previous enterprise applications?
Assume, well, what I like is the additional information, what, what was 100%?
Yeah.
Well, now it's $3,000, so I'm, I'm assuming on ones going forward, we would have that in the workshop, and we would have this additional information then.
And unless they give us the information, you know, if they, they say we need, you know, this, this amount of water meters, this sewer, we all want gas, we can give you a more definite, but based off the application.
Can we ask them for that?
We can. We might, we'll have to make our application a little more in depth.
I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna give something, we ought to ask as much as we can, what is it you want us to give upfront? It's nice to know that. And my only other thing is, and because these are two together with the same person, I still struggle to balance, one, I mean, what's the objective of these Enterprise Zones? And if one thing is, you know, hiring employees, you know, and getting jobs, well, one has five more jobs, or one has 60. I mean, I lean toward the incentive not being the same amount for that one that has 60 jobs and one that has five jobs, versus we give it all, you know, across the board, but that's just a personal...
Well, one thing, we talked about, Jessica and I were talking about this the other day, and you know, incentives are put in place as that, as an incentive, when there's disinvestment in a particular area, in this particular case, these, this was, we were allowed to create these per state law because we could show disinvestment, blight, and increased crime, and that kind of thing. So these incentives have done their job. They've certainly, you know, created downtown development, they've created investment, they've created jobs. So at what point in time do you say, okay, now we've brought everything up to the point that the area in and of itself now being in that area is the incentive versus offering additional incentives? So, I know, you know, we talked about that and, and can kind of look at that as well, and maybe begin sort of a sunset phase on some of these since there's, you know, at least along Main Street and some of the areas where we've got good strong development in tax base.
And I don't disagree, that's a case where you look at the one that created five jobs, right? Versus you're gonna, incentives are somebody that's gonna bring in 60 additional jobs.
Well, I think the five...
I'm willing to give incentives for 60 additional jobs.
Yeah.
There are two different classifications.
Yeah.
Basically, according to the state law, if you create five jobs, then you're gonna, you know, and other economic stimulus is, as the statute reads, then you'll qualify the Enterprise Zone under being a qualified business. Then you have this other section talks about rehabilitation of, you know, structures and buildings, which means you don't have to be, you know, qualifying business to get the, the Enterprise Zone exemptions. So you really have two classes, you have the, now, that five jobs is just the state minimum. You know, other jurisdictions may say 15 jobs, or have other requirements in order for you to be a qualified business within their individual ordinance. And it's something that, you know, I've talked a hundred about it, but we need to look at these Enterprise Zones, exactly what, you know, we're getting, you know, in return for these various exemptions we're giving.
To monitor every year.
Yeah.
That's right.
To make sure that they're still...
They still qualify.
They're made, that's true.
Almost by definition, is, is, is the mayor talking about, the investment is, is almost definition of none.
Right.
Because you do it for multiple years.
I don't know that I've seen anything that has some type of a sliding scale for either qualifying for 100% tax abatement versus 50% tax abatement, whereas Jack, you referencing, somebody might create five jobs, someone could create 60 jobs, so let's kind of make a differentiation between how much tax paper they're gonna get. Generally, you don't see that type of sliding scale in an ordinance, because you run into issues about being arbitrary, capriciousness, application, but I, you know, I would think that if you had definitive criteria that spelled it out, you know, and made the application of that tax abatement equal, then I think that you could overcome that type of an argument. But I think it's something that needs to be looked at to see exactly what, we want to get a bag for our buck, so to speak, and make sure that...
I mean, I've seen it, we taking advantage of numerous state programs in private industry, they have something similar that, you know, based on the number of jobs you get, that, that's, that's where it's coming from.
I've looked probably at maybe a dozen other ordinances behind the Enterprise Zone. Atlanta, as you can guess, is probably the most extensive, and they may have some different formulas for being a qualifying business. Quite frankly, I mean, creating five jobs, is that enough incentive for us to give that tax abatement? We might want to look at some other type of middle ground. One always thinks that, you know, you're going to be giving the tax abatement because of renovating a building downtown and gonna be giving that ta, increase in the tax base, that's not necessarily the case. I mean, you can just create five jobs and you're, you're entitled to it.
Well, we've got the two resolutions here, of course, one of them is for residential use, the other one says two restaurants. The way I read this, this act here about the Enterprise Zone Amendment, Enterprise Act, it says qualifying business enterprises are primarily engaged in manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, processing, telecommunications, tourism, research, and development industries and residential construction. It doesn't mention restaurant facilities.
But if you look at qualifying business definition, do you have it pulled up?
Qualifying enterprises, yeah.
Yeah, but there's also the definition of a qualifying business.
Restaurants, more.
And it talks about creating five or more jobs?
Yeah, saw that part.
Right, so, and then when you go to the section that gives you the exemption, it talks about, I believe it says service industry and a qualifying or qualifying business. So when you look at that statute, you're, you're using the definition of a qualifying business, which is creating five or more jobs, which also is providing economic stimulus to the area. So that's, so you're, when you're looking at whether or not somebody qualifies the Enterprise Zone, don't look at qualifying enterprises, you need to be looking at the definition of a qualifying business, because that's what's defining who's qual, who's entitled, you know, to the...
I think, wouldn't the restaurant fall under the service enterprises?
I, I, I don't know, but it would be, if you're employing five or more people, then they're gonna be a qualifying business.
Because I think financial institutions and all that fall, and restaurants included, fall under the service enterprises, because when we...
Are you talking about the restaurants?
It says to receive the incentives for qualified businesses or service enterprises must be located within the Enterprise Zone, and they must create five or more full-time jobs.
Right.
And I think the restaurant aspect falls under the service enterprises.
Don't they define some code section, I mean, they, they, don't they reference the Department of Labor?
Uh, well, let's see here, qualifying service enterprises primarily engage in finance, insurance, or real estate activity, or activities listed under the SIC code, 60, that 70 of the Federal Office of Management and Budget Standards and Restaurant classification may...
Restaurants are not within that CIS code.
Restaurants are not in the SIC codes.
So it doesn't come in to that subsection of the statute?
So where do they fall then?
Qualifying business, because of creating five or more jobs.
They're creating five jobs. And that's where, you know, like I was saying, I, I think maybe we ought to look at, and you know, we'll have Bruce here to help us with the redevelopment project, and Bruce was who helped create this enterprise fund, and I'd really like to see us transfer that tool and that resource over to our redevelopment area, maybe shift it and redefine where is our redevelopment area, you know, and, and because...
To the point, has it, has it done what we wanted?
Yes, it has.
Do we move on?
Yeah, exactly.
The Enterprise Zones that you have established now, as I understand it, were renewed in 2010, they last for 10 years, so you're gonna have a sunset on this thing in 40 years in any event.
Yeah. So that'll give us the opportunity, that gives us plenty of time to define where we want that.
It'll be here for we know.
Well, it will be, if, if we're all still here, so.
I'm sorry, I just got here. Can we, what, what do we propose?
All right, we need, we're looking at...
Yeah, I understand where we're at, I'm just saying, what, because you know, I had an issue with how in the past we gave 100% incentives on everything, and we're only wanting to give $1,000 of incentive.
I prepared a spreadsheet of all the incentives that we've given the past 10 years, and then the staff recommendation on those we did for the... the staff recommendation on those we did for the max as Mr. Goldco wanted, which is considering what we consider one hundred percent, except for the building permit. So if y'all would like to amend that, staff, environmental management did give some type of.
This is the, which one were you talking about? Utilities or landfill or business licenses or building permit?
Building permits, but, because we have given a max incentive of five thousand, and that was for the half a million dollars of renovation to the, for the residential units, is that correct?
Given a thousand, correctly, a thousand.
But in the past, we have given full incentive on, now I understand going back and re, maybe revisiting, but, you know, till that change, I mean, I think we should go back in and say, okay, if you're bringing sixty jobs or five jobs, here's the incentive for that, you know, here's the maximum incentive if you were to create fifty or more jobs, whatever the, you know, calculation is or whatever. But for the time being, we've given a hundred percent incentive on building permit on every one of these, haven't we?
From what I can see.
In the past, that's correct, all right. And what I'm saying is, is until we get this new thing, I think it's giving four thousand more dollars to this individual that's gonna be putting in five hundred thousand dollars worth of. And it may not even be that, you know, I don't know what his, this is a guestment, is that correct? This is a guestment, right, five hundred thousand? Houston, yeah?
That's the plan he turned it, sir.
That's the plan he turned it?
Yes.
Okay, so at the end of the day, if he comes back and says, well, it only cost me three hundred and seventy-five thousand, would we give him back any? Probably not. But what I'm saying is, is the max incentive has been given continuously over the course of this program, until we fix it, I think you gotta maintain the course of our set precedent. Just my two cents.
Actually, that would probably correct.
Probably, that's as close as you get a legal answer.
One of the things that you wanna look at, and that's why I say when you start talking about a sliding scale on the tax abatement, but you had to have definitive criteria in order to make it, you know, that it's objective. And if you're not being objective, and it is subjective, then you can be challenged with being arbitrary.
Yeah, I mean, if we've always given a hundred percent, and that's fact, Houston?
Yes, council has always changed to a hundred percent, yes, sir.
You recommended less, council's always approved a hundred percent?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
And we gotta do a hundred percent unless we have some criteria, boy.
I agree, that's what I'm saying.
Yep, I agree.
All right, so we have something that's been presented to us that you're wanting to change.
Right. Now, have y'all already done, have y'all approved everything else and taken these out?
No, 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 we just got to number twelve, we were just discussing.
Oh, under the resolution, I'm sorry. All right, I'm thinking it was under casino.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Okay.
We did approve consent agenda, but now we're on number twelve. So, so how do you wanna handle, do you want to make a motion to approve with those changes, or?
So, we would amend granting the full incentives, is that how we need to propose that? Rob?
Incendios as shown with the exception of.
As I understand, what you're gonna do is change the staff recommendation on the building permit to a hundred percent.
We did another sheet in there that they fill out in those.
Okay, and then that'll be referenced in the resolution.
So y'all just wanna change, everything else is one hundred percent, just the building permit fee to five thousand?
To five thousand, and I think the other one is a hundred percent too, isn't it?
Yeah, it was seventy-five hundred and recommended six thousand, so it's only.
So it would need to, so it would need to go up another fifteen.
We can approve the resolution now, and then we attach this application, and we'll get everybody to sign it after the meeting. And it'll go on the record of the actual, there's a form.
So pretty much what we need to say, make the motion, is for both applications to be approved at the maximum incentive available.
There you go, is that your motion?
That's my motion, I may not plead to make the motion.
So we have a motion, up to that effect, is there a second?
Well, but it's the resolution, which, to Jessica's point, is we grant specific incentives as set forth on the list attached here to his exhibit A.
And that's what she's saying will be changed, is that right?
Yes, I mean, it's the same resolution as what's here.
Right.
Not, you're just approving, your motion is to approve the resolution.
My motion is to approve the resolution with those changes.
And then off the application.
It's with that exhibit A, and then you're saying exhibit A is what is the full amount.
All right, now here's my question, what is being presented is not, the exhibit A that's being presented.
With your resolution, so you would, you know, move to accept the resolution, provided exhibit A, provides for all, you know, maximum incentives permitted.
All right, so moved.
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
It's easier for him to say, but somebody.
But they're not all a hundred percent. Because the second year business license fee is just fifty percent, so.
But that's the maximum. But that's the maximum for that time.
That's the maximum percentage is fifty percent.
The second year business fee.
I just wanna be sure that A, the only thing changing on A is building permit fee.
And then B is, both building permits are going to maximum incentive.
Right, because the others, you know, tax abatement and all that's still needs to remain the same, even though it's not a hundred percent in all of years.
All right, now, going back to what you said, now, the business license second year says fifty percent, but we have maximum incentive a hundred percent. What, can you look at that? I see what you're seeing.
See, that's what I'm saying, because this one is, the second year is just fifty percent, that one's a hundred.
My bad, on that second application, it should say fifty.
So fifty percent is the maximum incentive for the second year it can get, okay.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution with the changes made to the attachment that becomes part of the resolution.
And the changes are only the.
Only the building permit fee.
Only the permit fee.
Mm-hmm. Because everything else has been given the maximum incentive.
Okay.
Right.
Based off the application.
Based on this application.
You assume what's in parentheses is the maximum.
That's right.
Okay, any further discussion, any other questions? John?
John?
Everybody good? All good? Okay. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, all right. So that was for both properties, Wes? I'm just wondering, we need to clarify that.
Yes, that was for both exhibits. Now, going, I don't know if I, can I go back and say we need to start reviewing and put in the scale?
What do we, what do we need to do to get that started?
I think what, I was charged Hunter Walker, you know, initiating.
Discussions we.
Process by which we can look into the enterprise zones and what might be an appropriate scale for incentives and tax abatements.
Sounds good.
Do we have that done before we have another application?
We have another application.
How about by three o'clock, morning?
I was gonna give you to four, but three o'clock's out.
Okay, so we have items twelve and thirteen covered. We're now on to item fourteen, for the resolution authorizing the new account at Sonova's Bank, and that's adding the signatures of Karen Sanders and Hunter Walker. Do we have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
All right, we have motions, our second?
Second.
We have a motion second, any questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, good deal. Item number fifteen is our ordinance under ordinances. We are looking at amending chapter six of the Code of Ordinances related to alcoholic beverages. We discussed that in our workshop.
The only changes to the ordinance that you have in your packet is where we took out a lot of that stuff for the event permit application, and so we narrowed that down to just the, what we really believe would be essentials for the application permit.
And that copy is in your packet, so if there is a motion to approve or not approve, I'll take that now.
So moved.
To approve?
Approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, is there a second? We have a motion to approve, and we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item under ordinances is to amend the overlay for the two thousand six oh six property located on West Twentieth Street from Edgemont Properties, and that's relating to the solar garden farm, whatever it is. Do we have a motion to approve or not approve that?
This is.
This is strictly the solar farm.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this is for the panel on the roof, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. Could have anything to do with the turn lane or the traffic light.
Traffic light, no.
Even though that was the original.
This is just the rooftop solar ramp, which is.
All right, can I ask a question? Has, have you had any discussion with him about the turning lane and the traffic light?
Yes, sir, during that meeting, we initially put in the planning dummy to ask that he was qualified, that he approved of that, and Mr. Hunter and myself, and Mr. Jones, and we were together.
So here's a question that I have, Rob. If we amend this, and then something comes up and we don't, because I think that this P, was it PDU? PUO? Isn't it, he has to do that, there's no.
There's no timeframe, is it? Is there?
Yes, sir, well, in two thousand and fifteen, when Mr. Jones modified it the first time, he was going to wait until the twentieth street was being done, so all that was gonna be done at the same time. During the meeting, he said he is not gonna argue that fact, he had no problem moving forward with the deceleration lane. The traffic light is, what's the question?
The traffic light is the question.
But if he does make a request, I'm gonna have to come back to the meeting.
But is there a way to, is there a time frame that he has to have this done?
That's what the meeting with Mr. Hunter's gonna be about, but, I guess, Jake.
Well, okay, but legally, is there a time frame that he has to have it done?
I don't know that.
I don't think it states the time.
There was nothing in the agreement evidently.
Not that I recall, not in the original plan. I mean, there was no, nothing, in the original plan, you said, there was nothing specified from a time standpoint.
No, it just has to be done before the full development is over.
He didn't say anything about it had to be done before the certificate of occupancy had to be done, or be given?
No, sir.
Okay.
Because he's got.
I mean, because it's already open, but I mean, I knew that, but I didn't know if we just give him some.
Because he's got other buildings in this development, right?
Is that correct? Oh, okay, okay.
And of course, this PUO has changed substantially since its inception.
Can we tie the approval of this to putting a date on the other?
Like you say, making it contingent?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think so.
That's my question.
So we can, but we can agree not to approve this?
I think that, you know, I mean, this is, we're just talking about this one application. Right now, if you're considering the original PUO, he's gotta put the traffic light in. I think that as far as consideration of this application, we should just deal with this application, approve it or not approve it.
Well, what you could do is table this item until they discuss until next workshop, and then have a call meeting after the workshop to approve the changes. Can we do that?
You can certainly table it.
Why would we wanna do that, though? Why couldn't we just deal with just the solar farm and do?
Because of a concern, I'm not complaining, there's no date, end date on him putting this traffic light or the turn lane, and there's no way to force him to do it until he gets around wanting to do it.
But it seems to me that those are two separate issues, just because they're in the same address.
Well, because it's all the same person.
I know, but they're both two separate issues.
But he was wanting to do all three together, wanting to change, he wanted, he comes with three things, and two of them, you know, we wanted to not have to do anymore. So then all of a sudden, well, okay, he's, you pull that back and not ask him to not do it, but there's no date that he has to do it.
So the concern is he may just put it off indefinitely.
That's my concern. I mean, he didn't wanna do it, you know, when it came along, but has decided, okay, I'm not gonna try to get that passed. It's something we want, I think.
It's needed, wouldn't you say, I mean, wouldn't you say that the traffic, the turning lane at minimum needs to be done, I think?
Yeah, I don't think there's any question about the deceleration lane, I think the question would be the traffic light. And if it trips the warrants, I mean, Trey may wanna speak to that, but there's certain warrants and requirements that typically would trip, where do you put a traffic?
Wasn't the intent that it was all gonna be done at the same time? When the building goes up and the traffic picks up, that's why we wanted it in the first place. The building's up and operating, and now we're gonna have multiple buildings.
That's the problem, as I said, you know, the original PUO was, I think, is dramatically different than what is on the ground now. And, you know, I can't really recall exactly what the original PUO called for, but there were other buildings. I think there was a pharmacy, so I don't know if you're looking at the revised PUO, is there still the need for the traffic light versus the original PUO, which required the traffic light because of the concentration of buildings and perhaps the traffic flow? So I don't know if there, I don't know if there's a difference between the traffic flow of the original versus the revised. I just don't know the answer to that.
Houston?
Sir, one of the things Mr. Jones had that I was a traffic study that presented to the planning zoning board, and in questioning the traffic engineer, none of the rest of the PUOs in consideration. Like current, I believe Trey will agree, as it sits, as long as the church is there and the DA is at not full capacity, then a traffic light isn't needed like now. However, when the pharmacy comes in, the church goes, and another building gets put in there, and there's two other buildings proposed, then definitely.
What else is proposed?
Sir?
What else is proposed?
Well, he's actually, it's been brought for us, but he has the authorization to put two more buildings on the other two lots on the other side of Ridge from the.
I'm okay, I mean, I think what you said, as long as he can't, I mean, once the plan is completed, right now you're at probably what call it phase one, you know, you got the VA up and running. Phase two will be the pharmacy, phase three could be these other two buildings or whatever. This is particularly attached to that phase one building with the solar panels to.
But the problem is, and I can see.
But we do have a timeline, so to speak, now, it does vary. You can't tell him he's gotta build a building within two years, but I mean.
Moons is gonna go in, my understanding is that's pretty much gonna happen. There's nothing to say that these other two buildings will ever go in, and so then.
Well, those other two buildings don't, if they're not operating at a hundred percent, I mean, a traffic study could be completed again and say that we technically don't need a traffic light. I know the decel lane I'm all in favor for, and I know he's gonna do that. I think that'd be pertinent to take a ride at that location or whatnot. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that at the end of the day, as long as the project is not completed, and it's not, it won't be finished, phase one is complete, we got phase two and phase three, I'm thinking of it like that. I'm okay, because at the end of the day, he's got to complete, once he finishes the whole project, he's gotta adhere to the rules.
But there's nothing set for that, your so-called phase three. The question is, if phase one and phase two is done, is a traffic light needed there? The VA is operating at a hundred percent or ninety percent, and then you got the pharmacy, does that require a traffic light?
We are authorized, we can have a traffic study and at Mr. Jones's expense, and we value it. And actually, that's what Mr. Jones proposed.
So once phase two is complete, and there's, the business is up and operating, we could say technically traffic study on, we could do a traffic study after each phase technically.
And he would have to go ahead and put it in then?
Yes, sir.
If it.
Currently, if the traffic warrants, which is the result of the study, am I right, Trey?
That's right, basically, if you can do a traffic study before or after, based on what you think your occupancy is going to be, and what he had done prior to the VA actually opening, it did not warrant a traffic pass just for the VA. As he increases development in the area, every time he goes to increase development, we can always put in.
But the original, that building was not supposed to be that big originally, though.
Correct.
So was that study based on that original size?
No, sir.
The new size?
The building was already up, he actually had occupancy listed for what that building was. We even questioned the building, we thought he was gonna have fifteen employees in the building, it's actually fifty. So we questioned, is occupancy actually that?
And the traffic study did not include the twenty-second or eighteenth street, and that's where the majority of the residents. and that's where the majority of the residents have voiced their concerns, because they don't want eighteen to become another twenty.
Right.
Um, so, again, at any time, we can go back and do a traffic study, but that's, that's one of the things that Mr. Jones wanted us to sit down and kind of get a better timeline.
Well, I think this is a separate issue, then, I think we will just take this as it is, and then come back to traffic study if we need to.
Yeah, thanks, Secretary.
I would, if you could come back in the future workshop, if you think, Houston, I mean, that makes sense.
Okay, well, let's go back to the solar farm. And that's all we're looking at right now, is the amendment to deal with the solar farm.
I, I move we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
To a motion second? No further discussion, I'm assuming? All those in favor, do you have discussions?
No.
You sure?
Yeah, I just wonder why he didn't have it in his original plan, but maybe he decided later to put this thing on there. That's all I'll say.
That's, that's a fact. We wouldn't be approving it here, per amendment.
I guess we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Uh, the next item is from, um, Sheila to discuss the, um, approval, well, Sheila, Sheila, do you have something to present to us about the participation in the twenty sixteen heat program, so let you tell us about that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. The item that you have before you is the request to participate in a request from customers for tax deductible donations made payable to the heat, which is the energy assistance team. These donations will be available to qualified families in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars per family or individual to pay their natural gas bills for the city of Tiff. Now, the letter that you have before you, which is signed by Mr. Walker, will be the one that's, that will be sent to the customer and instructing how the payments can be made. As you may know, the city of Tiff has received the heat award for many years, most recently being in two thousand and fourteen, and with your approval, the letter will be sent out starting this month.
Okay, any questions about that? All right, I guess we need to have a motion to approve that, correct? Okay.
I'll so moved.
Okay, so we have a motion as our second, second, motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, great, thank you, that's a good program. Our next item is approval for Hunter to be added to the accounts held at BBNT, do you have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
All right, the motion is our second.
Second.
We have a motion second, all those in, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, the next item is discussion of noise ordinance, and I wanted to share with y'all, um, this week, we, uh, Chief Dowdy and I met with some residents of Duggan Street, and I know we've had residents come before us before with complaints about the, um, noise that comes from, in this case, Santos Lounge. And, um, the Santos plays their music two, three, four o'clock in the morning, and the police department has gone to the location, they've measured the decibel levels, and they are within the requirement, or the, the limit that the noise ordinance provides. But these neighbors are just so frustrated because this goes on all night long. And, um, so, uh, Chief Dowdy, you know, said that we, we can only enforce the ordinance as we have it, so I'm suggesting that we might want to look at changing this and, um, maybe have a cutoff time, where, or maybe, some, and Rob, you may have to guide me on this, maybe something to the fact that after maybe midnight or one AM, it drops way, way down. Any thought, discussion, I know they've talked to you a lot.
I've been, I've been into that, I mean, we, we, just, we, we've gone down, I think you, you and I went down, and, and, and there's really nothing that we can do, 'cause they're in the limit.
Yeah.
Until, the only noise that really comes from that is closing time.
Yeah.
When they open the door to close, the noise jumps out.
It is, but it's, they said it's bad, and they have, I mentioned, they're upstairs, I have signature petitions for people who have, you know, wanted to, they've signed a petition saying, we need help, saying.
Yeah, we, we, we need to, I mean, if, if there's something, a suggestion would be to, you know, to, 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 to limit, to, to, to maybe say one o'clock.
Yeah.
You know, if we, if we bring it down to just a, oh, you need to start the closing at one o'clock.
Yeah.
'Cause you can't get it to three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, they say it's three o'clock.
And that's when it's really, really bad.
Yeah.
I mean, when they throw those doors open at three o'clock in the morning, if you, I live on Thirteenth Street, and I can hear.
Can we do, because I don't know what, you know, fifty-five decibels is, can we, at some point, when you're in the workshop or something, and have some plan that says, okay, this is what fifty-five decibels sounds like?
Well, the problem is that we'll have your base, is what it is, that boom, 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 you know, that comes through.
It's a bump, boom, 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 boom. That's what I was kind of wondering, is whether or not is, is.
What are you?
He's not here.
I'm just kind of wondering, is the device that we have, is it properly measuring that base?
He says they have to calibrate it on a regular basis.
I just, yeah, I'd like to hear what.
It's just that, there's maybe this one hour.
Yeah.
Say, from two o'clock to three o'clock in the morning.
Well, if I'm over there, I don't want to miss it too.
I know.
I think you do it, what, what's closer, about twelve?
See, when, when you, I tell you what, come over there, you'll see, once you open that door, once you open that door at two o'clock in the morning, that noise for the next hour, it's just right there, like, dum, 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 dum. If you heard the bass, it's just right there, and, like I say, I live up on Thirteenth Street, so, and I hear it. Living on Duggan, you have maybe a hundred, two hundred yards, three hundred yards, and you hear it.
Yeah, there just needs to be a way, some way to allow the, the clubs to exist, but at the same time, be respectful of the neighborhoods, and, you know, after midnight or one AM.
And we've been there and asked him to, to turn it down.
Yeah.
And the police department have been there to ask them to turn it down. And they'll say, okay, and they'll turn it down for fifteen minutes, then when the police leave, it's gone again.
Well, but if, but if they're turning it above what the ordinance says, then.
Just, it, they're turning it up, they're turning it up. And when, when we, when you walked out, see, going from, from Duggan Street over to four oh one, there's a railroad track.
But wait, what I'm hearing, two different things, one, I'm hearing that the police comes and it's within.
It's within the, according to, according to Chief Dowdy.
Either within the ordinance or not.
It's in the ordinance.
It's within, it's just the sound.
It's within the ordinance, but.
But there's a turn it down, they come and tell them to turn it down, and they turn it down. I mean, they're, they turn it down to the ordinance, or was it already above the ordinance?
They turn it down to the ordinance, then after, after the police goes or whatever, then it's get beyond the ordinance.
Okay, well, that's a different situation.
Yeah, it gets beyond the office. Uh, Wes, Wes, you were down there, wasn't you?
I mean, when I did my ride through, or ride along with the police department, I mean, of course, that was before we had a noise ordinance, but it is very loud, you can hear that several blocks away, yes, you're absolutely right.
See, and this is the second time, we, we, we've, uh, we talked about this, we've been down there, remember? We went down there and asked them to do, and they, they promised that they were going, in fact, we brought them in, brought them in the court. But it's, it's just loud.
Well, I think, you know, the city council can do what you think is appropriate, because certainly noise can be a nuisance. And, you know, I think the question is, what's a proper noise level at what times? Now, I think what I'm hearing, Johnny, is that maybe with the doors closed, it's, it's okay.
It's not as bad.
When the door's open, it's not open.
It's not as bad when the door, when the doors are closed, it's not as bad.
And that's what the neighbors said, that came in.
And see, and, and this, from the town, they start to close, say, two o'clock, and from two to three, those doors are open. But the music goes on, the music doesn't stop when they decide to close the club.
When the doors were open, does it then violate the ordinance, or is it?
Yes, yes.
I, I tell you what I'd like to do, I just wanted to make the council aware of this, I'd like for you and, and, um, Chief Dowdy to talk about that, 'cause he has all the information about the calls and where, what it registers, when they go and check it and all of that, so. But we've got to provide them with some relief, because some, either, we need to lower the decibel or increase, whatever it is, we need to, to make it quieter, or impose a quiet time.
With the reporter at your workshop, I'm guessing they can't modify.
Yeah, we could impose a quiet time, that sounds like.
For your kind of thing where the doors, well, once that door stays closed, I mean.
Are there any time limitations now on when they can play this music, or reach these decibel levels? Or it's just any time they can do it?
There, I mean, the, I mean, right now, the ordinance provides a certain decimal limit.
But not a time, fifty-five, no time.
There are, I think we have, I think we have times in here, like for lawn mowers and things like that. I haven't looked at it recently, but I think that you can't operate some machinery before seven o'clock in the morning. So we do have some limitations on different types of noise during different kinds of events.
From eleven PM to seven AM, it can be fifty-five, at a residential public space institution or a noise sensitive facility. So, what, the question, what is fifty-five? That's my, I don't know how loud that is.
Sorry, anyway, all right, well, can you get with Chief Dowdy?
I would be glad to.
Okay, and then maybe at workshop, we can talk some more about it and say, okay, all right, I just want to make y'all aware, so. All right, our next item is our board report, and, um, as you can see, Jessica has provided, um, the information. Let me scroll back to where that was, uh, it is on page one fifty in your packet. We have, um, an issue that I think we've talked about with our Downtown Development Authority, that, um, if anyone is interested in making a motion to, um, address that issue that we've talked about, I cannot make a motion, so, um. I'll leave it at that.
I'm not sure what issue you're talking about.
Huh? Well, we have a member of the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. William Byrd.
Oh, yeah.
I, I move that we replace William Byrd with Jared Ross.
All right.
Say it.
We have a motion as a second, as you all know, Mr. Byrd has not, um, attended a meeting in over a year. So, um, we have a motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, now, Carrie's, any opposed, if that's Carrie's. And Mr. Ross happens to be in the room this evening, congratulations, Jared, we will get you sworn in. And, um, I guess that would be at the next council meeting, Jessica, we'll get Jared sworn in, okay? And we'll, um, I assume Chrisha will be in touch with him with regard to all of his board information. Will she do that, or do we do that?
Yes, she's right there.
Oh, I didn't see her, I can't see who's sitting behind the hall.
She's high.
I know, so you'll, you'll get with Jared on what he, he, perfect, okay, I didn't see about Chrisha, I'm sorry.
Coming up this year.
We do, we have, um, I talked today to Harold Chambers. Um, he has been a longtime, very good member of the DVA, and has just said, I, you know, need to step aside for a while, let someone else serve in that role, so, need to be thinking about that. Uh, we have some red, open vacancies or openings on Keep Tiff Beautiful Planning and Zoning, and, um, let's see, Julie Hunt's term expires this year on tourism, Tiff County.
Is she planning to get off, or you know?
I don't know.
I haven't heard back, I left her a message.
All right. So we've got, we've got several terms that are coming up this year, um, do we know anything about Tina? Moody on Tiff County Board of Health, okay, and then Ruth Lee, as you can see, is interesting, interested in continuing to serve her term on the zoning board of appeals. Um, you can see there, the board applications that we have on file, and, um, we always, you know, I encourage you, as you're out and about at civic clubs or church or wherever, you know, talking to neighbors, or, you know, encourage them to apply, because it, it takes our citizens to help us, um, with these boards and everything, so. Any further discussion on the board report? Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Walker, for our city manager recruitment update.
Ms. Lamb, as we have, as of, uh, closing business today, I think we have gotten sixty, uh, applications, we got our sixtieth one just before we came in here, and I think that we proposed, we would both, you know, cut that off now.
Right.
Uh, and, and, and so we will give you an updated spreadsheet, uh, on, on that, and then we will meet the committee that will work with, uh, Mr. Jones and this, uh, Cooper and I on at least kind of maybe put into the list down to, uh, a more manageable number. Out of the sixty, there, 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 a, a number that do not meet qualifications. The good news is, there's a number that, that does.
Excellent.
And, and so you really would, I think, I think we're gonna have a, a, a.
Some quality applicants.
Quality applicants to choose from.
Okay.
And, and with the goal of this committee, we would just be able to come back at the, uh, uh, workshop in October with whatever the number needs.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to serve on this committee, um, we need, need two volunteers, um.
I volunteer.
I volunteer.
Okay, well, we got two. Is that good for everybody?
Perfect.
All right, so Frank and Jack will be our, uh, our committee volunteers, our council volunteers, I should say, to serve on this committee, to work with AR and E and.
And one of the things that, uh, Mayor Smith had mentioned before the meeting, and it really made sense, would be for the opportunity for, for y'all to discuss, not necessarily people, uh, uh, if you will, but qualities, strengths, what, what, what may be the.
What are we looking for in a, in a manager?
You're looking for, and you really haven't done that, and I apologize, uh, not to have set that up, but I did, I think it really.
Well, if we make it, could put that on our, um, um, workshop agenda, I know that's a couple of weeks away, but y'all have got a lot of resumes and applications to go through, and I think if we can maybe discuss that. So be thinking about, you know, what, what's the strong suit, what are you, you know, what, you know, characteristics or skills?
What are you looking for?
Yeah, what are we looking for, and, um, let's put that on the agenda. And again, not mentioning any, any names of anybody that's confidential.
That would just be, uh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, uh, that being said, there are no other agenda items, is there anything else we need to discuss? Y'all want to stay any longer, you want to talk with us? I say let's adjourn. Good meeting, thank you, we are adjourned.